We will call this meeting of the City Council to order. If you could please find a seat. We will start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Councilmember Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Everyone, please rise for the invocation. Please join in bowing our heads. Father, we come before you to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to reside here in the city of Oceanside. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of different backgrounds, different beliefs, different presences, and different futures. Yet one common goal, and that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek your guidance, your wisdom, and your discernment during the deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Mayor Weiss, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Rodriguez, and Councilmember Feller. May you grant them wisdom and peace as we lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. And we pray for our city as they go into the Christmas season and this holiday season. May it be blessed and a wonderful 2019 as well. In your precious name, amen. If you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, flag in the right corner. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
At this time, I'd like to have all of my colleagues join me out for the Employee Service Awards. And all of the department directors as well, to join us down here, please. Rob, where's your sweater?
Good evening, Mayor Weiss, council members, department directors, and audience. It's with great pleasure that we present to you tonight employees who have reached the praiseworthy accomplishment of 20, 25, and 30 years of service. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your award. Dolores Alvarez. Dolores initiated her career with the city of Oceanside on October 6, 1998, as a Code Enforcement Officer 1. Dolores advanced within her department through the years and currently holds the position of Senior Code Enforcement Officer. Please join me in recognizing Dolores for 20 years of service. Thank you, Dolores. Darren Eaton. Darren launched his career with the city of Oceanside on December 7, 1998, as a Program Analyst in Information Technologies. Darren has held several positions within the IT department and currently serves as Information Systems Analyst 4. Let's congratulate Darren for 20 years of service to our community. Thank you, Darren. Next, we have Michael Heiser. Michael Heiser initiated his career with the city of Oceanside on November 16, 1998, as a Maintenance Worker 1 in the Water Utilities Department. Michael has held various maintenance positions within Water Utilities and currently serves as Utility Worker 3. Let's congratulate Michael on 20 years of service to the community. Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Roger Pefers. Roger initiated his career with the city of Oceanside on December 7, 1998, as a Computer Systems Specialist. Roger has dedicated his career to information technologies, has performed several roles within IT, and currently serves as Information Systems Analyst 1. Let's congratulate Roger for 20 years of service to our community. Thank you, Roger. Next, we have Dave Ria. Dave began his career with the city of Oceanside on December 7, 1998, as a Computer Systems Specialist. Dave has held various support roles within information technologies and currently leads the team as Division Manager. Dave, congratulations on 20 years of service. Thank you, Dave. Next, we have one employee attaining 25 years of service, Roger Horn. Roger began his career with the city of Oceanside on December 27, 1993, as a Mechanic 1. Roger has been a dedicated member of the fleet team for 25 years and continues to serve as a mechanic. Let's congratulate Roger for 25 years of service. Thank you, Roger. Next, we have our final two employees who have reached 30 years of service. Kisa Machado. Kisa started her career on September 11, 1988, as a Housing Technician in our Neighborhood Services Department. Kisa has held various positions within the Housing Department and currently serves as Supervising Housing Technician. Let's congratulate Kisa for 30 years of service to our community. Thank you, Kisa. And lastly, we have Michael Mulroy. Michael initiated his career with the city of Oceanside on November 13, 1988, as a Police Officer. Michael has dedicated his career to public safety and continues to serve as a Police Officer. Thank you, Michael, for your dedication and service for the past 30 years. Congratulations, Michael. That concludes our Service Awards for tonight. Once again, thank you for your dedication and congratulations.
So at this time, I'd like to invite Emerald from the Chamber of Commerce to come forward with the Business Spotlight.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ann Jarvis, the Center Director for the USO Camp Pendleton, and her team to come up. On behalf of the Oceanside Chamber, I'd like to introduce Ann Jarvis of the United Service Organization's location on Camp Pendleton as the Member of the Month for December. Ann serves as the Center Director at the USO Camp Pendleton, a nonprofit that provides live entertainment, donations, and other resources to service members aboard Camp Pendleton. So far, the USO at Camp Pendleton has served over 35,000 military families. Ann has been with the USO for over six years now. She graduated from the University of San Diego with a degree in Marketing and Communications before joining the team at Fox 5 Studios. While working for The Morning Show, she started volunteering at the USO San Diego. She started volunteering at the Camp Pendleton USO, or excuse me, her volunteering started at Camp Pendleton, but it took her all around the world to places like Asia, Afghanistan, and even Alaska, where she opened up the first USO there as well. You know, today, she opens up the first USO on a Marine Corps base on Camp Pendleton. So we're very excited to have the USO as a new Chamber member, and we thank them for their support to the military families aboard this base. So at this time, I'd like to invite Ann to say a few words.
Thank you. We're honored to be here. I could not do this by myself. We help a lot of military on Camp Pendleton, and this is my staff, Katie Henderson, with our Pathfinder program through transitioning service members, as well as Tracy Janika is our Programs Manager, and these two I couldn't do without them. So we're excited. We are finally getting a center, so we've been centerless for about a year, and we've started construction. So this new year is going to be awesome because we're starting with a center, and it's going to be great. We're excited to serve more military.
Thank you very much. Mr. Muller.
Thank you. The council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the status of labor negotiations with the Oceanside Police Officers Association and the management employees of the city of Oceanside. There is no action under the Brown Act required to be reported.
Yes, Consent Calor Items 3 through 13. One moment. Is Jim Oberg here by any chance, Jim Oberg? You said you wanted to speak on item number 3. That was acceptance of the action minutes from last meeting. Is that what you wanted to speak on? So on your form, you said you want to speak on Agenda Item Number 3, but that's, the Agenda item is for accepting the action minutes from last council meeting. Is that what you wanted to speak on? Or it says you want to speak on Harbor Service Provider Insurance Requirements? Okay. I just wanted to make sure we got through that one. Okay, so Item Number 3 through 13.
Move Approval. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Dean.
Yes, Item Number 14 is Authorization to Award a Contract in the Amount Not to Exceed $1,122,740 to Performance Plumbing and Mechanical Incorporated of Oceanside for Construction of the El Corazon Sustainability and Culinary Arts Kitchen Project. Approval of Professional Services Agreement with the WLC Architects Incorporated of Carlsbad in an Amount Not to Exceed $46,800 for Architectural and Engineering Support Services during the construction of the project. Approval of Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $725,000 from the Solid Waste Fund Balance and Authorization for the City Manager to Execute the Agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Carrie Tale, Water Utilities Director, here to speak on Item 14, which is Award of a Construction Contract for the El Corazon Sustainability and Culinary Arts Kitchen Project. That's a mouthful. Tonight's action is three parts. One, to award a construction contract to Performance Plumbing in the Amount of $1.12 Million. Approve a Professional Services Agreement with WLC Architects in the Amount of $46,800. And to appropriate $725,000 from the Solid Waste Fund Balance. Now, you may be asking yourselves, why is Water Utilities doing a building tenant improvement project and a kitchen project for that? And the reason is that we are driven by a lot of mandates, and that's the case with this particular action. There were two laws that were passed in the last few years, AB 1826, as well as SB 1383, both dealing with organics and mandating that the city develop programs to divert organics by landfill by the milestones shown on the slide. In particular, SB 1383 has a specific component to develop a food recovery program by 2025 and to ensure that 20% of the food that was going to landfill in 2014 be diverted. Since 2011, the city has improved on its diversion rates with a low rate of 54% in 2011 and a high rate of 72% in 2014. We've achieved that by implementing programs such as single-stream recycling, public recycling, zero-waste school program, as well as the Green Business Program, to name a few. Over time, that recycling rate has dropped. We believe that's due to the economy picking up and more consumables being used in the community. There is a mandate in the state, as well as at the city here, to divert 75% of overall materials from the landfill by 2020. Right now, we are at 67%, and we believe implementing a comprehensive organics program, including the kitchen, will get us an additional 12% and help us achieve that goal. Staff has been working on kind of low-hanging fruit programs, easy-to-implement programs, such as the Zero-Waste Schools Initiative. So we're implementing share tables at the schools. We have been doing backyard and residential composting workshops, and we are negotiating with waste management right now on a new commercial service to implement organics collection in the community. In moving this project forward, staff looked at the El Corazon Senior Center was really an ideal venue because it already had a shell in which a kitchen was proposed to have been constructed. When it is constructed, we'll support a culinary arts training program for the local community and fulfill an unrealized need related to events and recreation at the Senior Center. Council authorized staff to call for bids in October of this year, and four bids were received. The low bidder is Performance Plumbing with a bid of $1.12 million. Performance Plumbing is located in Oceanside and specializes in these types of construction projects. They've constructed the Black Plague Brewery in Oceanside, as well as both Pizza Port Restaurants in Carlsbad, and a vendor kitchen and restroom project at San Diego State University. We know that the cost of the project is high, and we have taken steps to reduce the project cost, including removing purchase of the equipment from the bid, which has saved approximately $45,000 in markup costs over that purchase by the contractor. We've also purchased a storage shed directly, and, yeah. Tonight's action includes the construction contract in the amount of $1.12 million, architectural support in the amount of $46,800. Staff is requesting an appropriation of $725,000 from the Solid Waste Fund. I've just mentioned the actions that we're requesting this evening. They include authorizing the City Manager to execute the agreements. And with that, I will be available for any questions, should you have any.
Mayor, we want speaker on this item. Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. I wholeheartedly endorse this. In fact, I manage one of the senior recreation activities, has already benefited from this whole project. And I can report to you that is very appreciated by the seniors, and I thank staff for all their activities and support of our seniors. This is also going to take and benefit other charitable operations throughout the North County area. And it's going to be as an adjunct to AB 2178. That is going to open up a lot of new opportunities as well, with charitable operations distribution to those who need it. So I, once again, I thank you for your consideration and thank you for your support.
No further public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Well, this is a great project in that it's partnering two things. One, our longtime need to finish the kitchen at El Corazon Senior Center, so that's wonderful. And then also to meet our mandates through the state. And we've been told by the state personally that we need to have, to be able to achieve these goals. Otherwise, there will be stiff penalties, and we definitely want to avoid those. So I'm really happy to support this and move approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
So I'm going to second that. AB 939, do you remember what the goal was for recycling in that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of your question. Could you repeat it, please?
Do you remember AB 939 when recycling was first coming on the scene? What the recycling goal was at that time?
Councilmember Feller, Honorable Councilmembers, I believe so. I believe it was 50%, and that was a while ago. I was working in the business then.
It's in the 90s, yes. I just, I think we've done a great job, you know. We have zero negative feedback on this, and we're spending $2 million that I'm sure is going to benefit a lot of people. I'm glad that we, as a city, can get behind projects, great projects like this that will benefit the city and the citizens, and as we already heard, the other nonprofits that are in this food recovery business already. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I had the opportunity to meet with one of the nonprofit who's in charge of food preparation, and I was really impressed with that conversation. And anything to support community, I'm all for, and I'm going to get behind it. And it is impressive that we can all get on the same page for an expenditure this high to do something that's going to meet the needs of our seniors, as well as our community. So I'm really looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. So, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0. So next, we're going to move on to Item Number 15. Item Number 15 is Discussion of Options to Fill the Vacant City Council Position to either, one, appoint a successor to fill the vacancy at this meeting, or accept applications to fill the vacancy by the February 6, 2019, regular council meeting; or, two, call for a special election on November 5, 2019, and provide direction to staff. With that being said, staff recommends that the City Council discuss the options to fill the vacant City Council seat position to either, one, appoint a successor to fill the vacancy at this meeting, or accept applications to fill the vacancy by the February 6, 2019, regular council meeting; or, two, call for a special meeting on November 5, call for a special election on November 5, 2019, and provide direction to staff. If you choose to go through a formal application process, we propose the following schedule. First, at this meeting, Wednesday, December 19, 2018, you declare the vacancy and you provide direction. Two, on Wednesday, January 9, 2019, you can establish a deadline to file applications with the City Clerk Department. Three, January 10 through January 22, you can have a review of the applicants and then potential interviews. Lastly, on Wednesday, January 23, 2019, if appointment, it will be, if appointment needs to be made, if no decision's been made at the January 16 meeting or earlier. The recommendation is the following: appoint a successor to fill the vacancy at this meeting, or accept applications to fill the vacancy by the February 6, 2019, regular council meeting, or call for a special election on November 5, 2019, and provide direction to staff. If you have any questions, please let me know. We do have some public on the side.
Is there a public?
Yes. Two speakers on this item, Jimmy Knott and Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. On this, we have two positions, even though, one, we know about publicly, the second one was announced online over the weekend, and that's our dear city clerk over here. And he slated to exit at the end of this month. The decision on the council is very simple. The council's position, I think, should be appointed to save the citizen tax money. That is very simple. Even though an election in the public would be referred, the public also wants to save tax funds. But I think there should be a process established, like what has been taking place in the past. There should be a date certain in the future, but there should be applications accepted and considered by this body. And also, as a second part of this, is that it should not be a stepping stone. Whoever gets the position should have a sworn statement under penalty of perjury not to run at the fulfillment of the vacancy time. That will take and be a very simple thing to do. If they violate it, off to jail they go. Because it's under penalty of perjury. I don't know how they could.
Not pass, go. Do not collect $200.
Exactly. Now, the city clerk, I tried to look in the past to see why the city clerk position was elected, and the only thing I could really find was that Oceanside used to conduct its own elections and count its own ballots. We no longer do that. That's done by the county. There was some discussion a few years back, and you know I've been sitting here for 25 years, listening to the council. And that is to either make the clerk's position an appointed position or an elected position. I think it's time for this body to debate that. And I think it's time for the public to debate it, and I think it should be part of the process. Personally, I think that it should be, at this time, an appointed, professionally appointed position. As you can see from our city clerk, the reason why he is exiting, it cannot be, he cannot afford to support his family or future family. I think that says a lot. Thank you.
Arlene Hammerschmidt, Oceanside High School Retired Physical Educator, Girls and Boys Head Volleyball Coach, SDSU Retired Teacher/Educator, Fire Mountain Resident. Mayor and Council, the first vacancy that needs to be filled is that chair right there. I would urge you, please, to select an open, transparent process in which public input is the primary consideration. And what was given as an example here tonight, I didn't see the opportunity for public input. I urge you to select a new face, younger, moderate, positive communication and mediation sc-. skills, a problem solver, and a team builder who models mutual respect at all times with unquestionable ethics in their past. A process similar to what I emailed you early this afternoon, a public workshop, kind of a workshop-like forum, of all applicants preceded by a poster session where the candidates' experience and qualifications and meetings could be displayed but not discussed. At three minutes each, why do you want to do this? What are your qualifications? Questions from the public that are answered by each applicant in two minutes or so. And an online public survey, rack, ranking the applicants. Then, in a council meeting, the results of the public survey are shared. Two minutes each, why are you the best applicant? Discussion among council. Select the top five applicants. Each of you select five, and the top five are the candidates, and then make nominations and vote from that top five pool. This includes public input. And right now, frankly, with all the appointments that you've had to go through, that's what's missing that would build trust from the community in this body. More public input rather than less. So public process, public input that influences the actual decision instead of influenced by outside and special interest groups and companies, clubs, or political parties. Please. I know it's a difficult job and I think we have some excellent people who've been involved. I like Jimmy's idea. Don't make it a stepping stone. Thank you all for your kind attention. Have a good evening.
No further public on this item.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
In reading the agenda, which was posted early, I, I came prepared, Honorable Mayor, with a couple individuals, and so I would like your feedback since it was on the agenda where we could, according to our city code and, and guidelines, we can appoint tonight. So I came ready. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I have been approached by and have met with or talked to, I think, 12 different individuals. And as, two as late as this afternoon, actually. I've not had a chance to talk to both of them, but one of them I did. My preference would be is, at least over the next couple weeks, that we collectively, I mean, the, there are at least 12, if not more, candidates out there that are interested, that we would meet with them. I don't know that I need to do formal interviews in front of the entire council, but I, I think it behooves us to meet with these people individually and come prepared at the next meeting to make a decision.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I do believe that we can make an appointment to fill the vacancy. And I would like to, for us to consider the timeline that has been proposed by the city clerk, which is on the agenda. And that is that we, of course, declare the vacancy today in terms of the, the direction that we encourage people to file applications with the city clerk's office, much like in the nature of the planning commission and what we did to fill the vacancy for the treasurer. And that there be a deadline, which is, the one proposed is Wednesday, January 9th. And that we set a interview process. I don't know how many people will actually be submitting. The timeline is from January 10th through January 22nd. Either we can do it together during a couple of workshops or if not, individually. I don't know the preference of my colleagues here. But then, I believe, is that Wednesday, January 23rd, is that a council meeting? That we then discuss this at the, on January 23rd, see if we can come up with a consensus on one person. So I would make that as a motion.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. I looked at the schedule and I think it is something that we should do as quickly as we can. There's a lot coming and, and there's, there's, unfortunately, everybody. I mean, I had Rick Krakowski, he, he'd like to be considered. I mean, but I haven't had a chance to interview him and, and so I, I think we can use our time wisely, like from now till January 4th, which is a Friday, and have, that would be the deadline to be interviewed as far as I'm concerned. I, I can schedule plenty of time to interview with any candidates that are willing. I've only had two actual interviews and I think three phone calls, so. But I, but I, I know there's a, a large list of people out there, so. And then if we have interviewed everybody that is interested in coming to us by January 4th, we can make the decision on the 9th. By, much like you, you suggested, I think, you know, have them apply directly with us. You know, we're being inundated by emails and support groups for various candidates right now, but, and I'm sure it will happen the same way going forward.
I had actually planned on taking some time off during the holiday season here, December. So that would really cut down my time in terms of trying to get a lot of interviews by January 4th. I mean, I had already planned, I already made plans for-
Well, then we could do it tonight. I mean, if-
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I agree with, I agree with Councilmember Feller. I think this needs to be expedited, but I do agree that we need to establish a level of trust with Oceanside and have an opportunity for all members of council to interview any applicant, any qualified applicant. And I, if, if the fourth doesn't work, I would make a motion that the deadline would be the 8th, and then we can make a decision on the 9th.
Is there a second to that?
So that's Tuesday instead of, so, well, I imagine we will have heard from everybody by then. I mean, we're supposed to be hearing from them by the next day anyway, and it would allow-
The, the deadline would be the 8th?
The 9th, yeah. And then the 9th-
And then we meet people overnight to, to come up with something less than 24 hours later? We're going to interview, I don't know how many people, within a 24 hour period?
Well, I think the issue is we would individually-
Interview that people want to come and visit each council member.
So it'll be a private interview.
So I, I can go along with that.
So we were setting that the Tuesday, January 8th would be the deadline for us to individually interview whomever we think are qualified candidates and then be prepared for the 9th to make an appointment. No, we don't have to make an appointment on the 9th. We can certainly do it at the 23rd if things change. But if an appointment is not made by February 6th, I take it-
Either, you either have to call for the special election or you'd have to call for a special meeting on February 10th, I believe.
Well, at that point, we could combine the clerk and the council member, save some money.
Well, first of all, that means that we will be hearing from people on the 9th for the first time by the public. And that's not very, that's, that's not a very public process. What I had heard, and I heard a little bit of support from those that are here tonight, is that it really only gives us, there's no meeting in between now and the 9th. So pretty much, we're going to jam everything into the next meeting. And I, I, I think that's, we, we can, I think we should take a little more time. It's pretty important. So I would, I would actually still urge us to consider the timeline that has been presented by the city clerk's office.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I made a motion and I believe Councilmember Feller seconded that. If we can move it to a vote?
Can we? Can I be real quick? I just wanted to clarify that the motion includes declaring the vacancy effective December 12th, which was the date Councilmember Sanchez was sworn in.
And one point of clarification on the motion, just from the city clerk's office standpoint, so as I am understanding this, the applications will go directly to the council members, they won't run through the city clerk's office, correct? Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-1. Sanchez, no.
Anything on 17?
Yes. So we have a number of speakers on off agenda items. First speaker is Nick Ritchie.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Two Fridays ago, I was greeted at a local business by a tangle of Bird electric scooters. With further inquiry, I was informed that the company, without a business license, simply dumped their scooters along the strand on Mission and at Angelo's in South Oak. Please, if they request a business license, do not grant it. The scooters are an eyesore, they obstruct pedestrian traffic, and the bicycle rental at the pier deserves to be protected. As the city prepares to collect Measure X taxes and decide on what the tax dollars will support, I urge you to spend these dollars on only what we need. And what we need is restoration of the rapidly degrading road surface of Coast Highway from Vista Way to Seagate. Two, bathroom renovation and reconstruction at the pier, Tyson Park, and Buccaneer Park. Three, seismic retrofitting of the pier bridge. The city already participated in meeting a lobbied want, El Corazon Aquatic Center. They got it, they wanted it, and there it is. But we need these restorative projects. Also, one other entity is not a need. We do not need to add another homeless outreach team. The current homeless outreach team cannot provide any statistical evidence that they have brought a significant number of homeless to wellness and housing. If tax dollars are being spent on homelessness, we want to see a significant number of people restored, not anecdotal's. Currently, the city is reviewing the conditional use permit of Brother Benno's. Brother Benno's amazingly serves the working poor with food boxes, subsidizing them in such a way as to help prevent homelessness. However, a small percentage of the homeless they give services to have become a major problem for Oceanside. They receive services with no accountability. Please require that Brother Benno's require accountability to work programs of wellness or not receive services as a requirement to continue their conditional use permit. Thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
Our next two speakers are Jason Willis, followed by Ken Layton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Jason Willis, I'm in the Wayland Ranch condominiums. I am here to urge the city to please re-explore all options when considering rezoning the city's current zoning plans. Uh, sorry, I'm not as prepared probably as I should be. I, I know that we are looking at many commercial ordinances coming up and already in motion. However, the city does have many assets in place along places like Mission Road, Vandergrift, even right up here up the street, that our current infrastructure is already there, that we can definitely improve upon and bring in the kind of business that we want in our city. This city is getting this, the half cent sales tax in April, and I realize that this will help with our infrastructure, the roads, you know, for the higher traffic areas and everything, but that is a gradual process. We can take steps now to improve their current assets within the city instead of just adding on to our current, you know, workload. With that said, as far as infrastructure goes, this, the state of our roads and our, well, our roads is not in the greatest condition. That comes into play with the fire excavation routes and fire emergency planning. I believe the Lilac Flower, Fire showed deficiency in our excavate, uh, ex, excuse me, in the, getting people out of the area, okay? So I urge you to revisit our fire emergency plan because there was, we don't want another, we don't want a paradise here. I'm not saying that it's going to happen, but it could. We should definitely look at what we have in place now and see how we can better prepare for the future. That's all. Thank you.
Ken Lay, Ken Layton, South Oceanside, speaking only for myself. Welcome new councilmember Rodriguez, mayor, councilmembers. It is heartening to hear that city clerk Zach Beck will finally be getting paid what he is worth with his segue into a full-time position in Escondido. The bad news is he is leaving Oceanside in a time when the city hall talent pool is at a low ebb. Please recall that Mr. Beck's predecessor was famous for not doing her job. At least two current councilmembers will know she was at least a year behind filing the council meeting minutes. And because she was elected, she didn't seem to care. She still, and she still got her $120,000 for not doing her job. When Mr. Beck came, came in, he did do a job in a nonpartisan professional manner. Minutes got filed on time. And he cleaned house and managed to get rid of the employees in his office who were not doing their job. But here's the catch. The council changed it so Mr. Beck's salary, $23,000, was about one-fifth of his predecessors'. How exactly does that work? Now comes a new treasurer who got elected without ever showing us a college transcript or telling us where he ever worked before. Unlike Carlsbad, that also elects its treasurer and which also demands proof of a college degree and four years field-related experience. As Mr. Roy's election proves, all you need to oversee Oceanside's $350 million investment portfolio is to be 18 and registered to vote. I have been told that the city is protected, that following the death of Gary Ernst, it was set up so that the full-time financial professionals who work for the city will make all the crucial investment decisions, and that not to worry, Mr. Roy won't drive us in a ditch. With all due respect, wrong answer. If the reality is our treasurer is there simply in a passive advisory capacity, at least consider Dr. Tricky's recommendation to establish a Carlsbad-like minimum requirement threshold for all future elections for treasurer starting in 2020. Otherwise, why do we even have a treasurer? It seems Oceanside is well-equipped with competent in-house financial professionals. Fair enough. But please, look into Dr. Tricky's recommendation and fix this obvious flaw baked into our election code. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Jerry McCardle and Jim Oberg.
Jerry McCardle, 1540 Harbor Drive North, and I am a livid board down at the harbor, also a service provider in the harbor. I have a small marine cannabis business, sole proprietor. And the, recently been notified by the harbor that the $1 million, $2 million policy that I have for my company is no longer valid. I need a $2 million, $4 million policy, which will take my- I need a $2 million, $4 million policy, which will take my yearly rate from $400 to $2,200 a year. Sole proprietor running a small business, that's a bit of a jump. When the service provider program was initially put in, the city attorney said, "The canvas workers don't need to be part of this because they don't oppose, or they propose any environmental hazards." So, we were exempt from the thing for the first, I don't know, five or six years, and then it was decided to change. So, I bought the policy, signed up for the whole thing. And I've got a $1 million, $2 million policy right now. A sole proprietor, if I do more than a million or $2 million worth of damage, I think most of the harbor's gonna be gone. I just think that having that much insurance for a small business sole proprietor is outrageous and ludicrous and ridiculous. There's no way that's ever gonna happen. I'd have to drop an atomic bomb on the harbor. So, what I'm saying is for the council to reassess this and the harbor to reassess this and say, "Hey, you know, maybe this is overstepped. I mean, a, a big company or somebody that's got 20 employees, they've got chemicals coming in out of the harbor or in and out of the city, $2 million, $4 million, I can see that. But a sole proprietor running a small business? I've been doing it for 14 years. I've been paying taxes, sales tax into the city. My business license goes into the city. I live on my boat down at the harbor. I spend, I don't know, $10,000 a year spending for slip rent. So, I don't know how much more I can give to the city. I'd like to keep my business going, but when I'm paying that much for insurance, it's kinda gonna shut the thing down. And part of the thing in Oceanside is small businesses are doing good stuff. So, I'd like you to consider that. Thanks for your time.
My name's Jim Oberg.
I represent the company Douglas K. Smith Marine Insurance in San Diego. We write ship repairs, marine general liability, insurance coverage on the West Coast, East Coast, and Gulf Coast. Every one of the policies we write is a $1 million per occurrence, $2 million general aggregate policy. It is a liability policy. The proposed plan to increase the requirements to $2 million, $4 million for sole proprietors, as the gentleman who just spoke brought up, is pretty stiff. If a person, if an individual company, person, whether it be a diver, canvas, wash, wax, and polish mechanic, if they're making a payment, or a premium of $1,750, their annual premium will more than double. And generally speaking, you're talking about somebody who might be making as little as $30,000 to maybe $50,000. That's a huge amount to have to incorporate into their annual funds. The city is also requiring individuals to carry a $2 million, $4 million sudden and accidental pollution liability policy. They're not, well, they're not written, and I want to say right now, you cannot go out, as we speak as of today, and get a $2 million, $4 million policy. I'll say effectively and quickly. They're very expensive. The companies that will do it, they just, all they do is just keep charging, 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 so the premiums go through the roof. I, I just believe, there's not, there's not another marina municipality across the country on any of the coasts that I brought up that require a $2 million, $4 million limit. I strongly recommend that you reconsider it for the sake of the individuals doing the work and for the opportunity to be able to even go out and get the coverage for them. It's very, very expensive. Thank you very much.
Our next two speakers are Andres Garza and Vanessa Jumalan.
Councilmember and Mayor, my name is Andres Garza, and I'm going to talk about a need for a new sewage update. As of the range of this past month, there has been major, there were major flooding problems along such streets as Oceanside Boulevard and Canyon Drive. When you would be driving, there'd be massive floods and puddles that sometimes would even flood cars. What I've been asking for funds is to create a new placement of sewage outlets or drainage systems. For example, the city of Santa Monica, they have, they implemented recently a new plan which allowed for new sewer outlets throughout the whole city, and when rains do come there, it is not disflooded. In addition, with these new rains, the problem of landslides came up. And another thing the city of Santa Monica did is the planting of more trees. It is scientifically proven that trees prevent the risk of landslides because of the roots that grow out in the system. By planting more trees, in addition, cities, the community value net worth will increase tenfold. In, in the end, I would just like to say that, as a resident of Oceanside, I'd like to see the betterment of the city, and hopefully, as a future resident. Thank you.
Thank you.
I grew up with Oceanside Unified School District since elementary school up until now and my last lap of high school. Since then, the OUSD has made attempts for improvements for the school community. One of the most successful and efficient way that has benefited both the community and the environment is a zero-waste initiative. Seeing that, not only the locals, but also nationwide, students, adults, and children have been making attempts to become environmentally friendly. So, having this program implemented when I was in middle school was encouraging, and it showed progression in our society. My peers began becoming environmentally aware and highly appreciated the convenience of having recycling bins right next to trashcans. However, stepping outside of campus and not having bins to throw away plastic bottles or other recyclable material was a bit discouraging. There has been multiple moments where my friends and I would walk along Coast Highway or the beach and would wanna throw away our containers, but there would be no recycling bin. It was a brief moment of disappointment since we were used to having proper places to dispose recyclable trash. Before, we'd just feel guilty and move on with our day, but thinking back to it now, it doesn't make sense that the Oceanside Schools has their youth learn, appreciate, and exercise the idea of being environmentally aware, but outside of school walls, students are back to the old habits as if this initiative never happened. This zero-waste program has taught and raised students to become more considerate to our planet, especially since we are also a beach city who has direct impacts from the climate. So, since we are making our youth practice this new lifestyle, we should also give that opportunity outside of school. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Roger Davenport and Stephen Halford.
So, Mayor, City Councilmembers, I'd like to talk tonight about the home of the future and building electrification. My basis of this is that when you're going the wrong way, it's wise to not keep going that way. It's good to turn around and go the other way, and the sooner you do it, the better. The argument is basically that we're going the right, wrong direction right now. Fossil fuels are finite, they're limited, they, their use involves consequences that are negative in addition to climate change, things like pollution, acid rain, asthma, cancers, and destruction of habitat. And to avoid even more catastrophic climate change activities than we're seeing already, we need to reduce our greenhouse gases substantially and rapidly, and we need to leave about 90% of fossil fuels in the ground rather than digging them up and burning them. And right now, greenhouse gas levels are all over, already over 400 parts per million, and that's higher than any prior time in human history. So, looking at things that are going on, slowing down isn't really enough. You can't do it by improving efficiency. You can't do it by changing from coal to natural gas. We really need to get rid of our use of fossil fuels. And so, and as we see recently, things are accelerating, so we really only have a few decades to finish a transition to renewables from fossil fuels. But we can turn it around. In the 50s, they didn't have technology to be able to power their houses efficiently and renewably, but they had the right idea. The home of the future is the all-electric home. And we have the technology now. Solar power is cheaper and available, and it eliminates greenhouse gas emissions at the, at the side of a house. We have advanced electric technologies that are cost-effective and efficient, like heat pump water heating and heat pump heating and cooling. And there are also storage technologies that are dropping in price that eliminate the problems. So, how can we reverse direction? This is where the policies come in. We need to have policies that encourage rooftop solar, 100% renewable power on new buildings. We need to encourage all-electric homes and buildings. I noticed there was a new development on Oceanside Boulevard just west of Five that's advertised as all-electric, which is really great. And I discourage any new infrastructure or development of natural gas infrastructure. And we see that implementing CCE and putting this into our climate action plan would be a very good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to our time-certain public hearing. Councilmember Rodriguez, did you have? Okay. So, is there only one left?
There's two technically. There's Stephen Halford and Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Stephen Allen Halford. I was born and raised here. Matter of fact, I was just baptized right up the street at Mary's. But anyhow, this has got nothing to do with what I'm here for tonight. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the same thing that Jerry did and that Mr. Oberg did, and that's the new requirements to service providers in the Oceanside Marina. Marina is actually the proper term for what Oceanside Harbor is. It's not a working harbor, it's a marina. What is being required of us is just not doable. There is not enough income from the harbor to satisfy these requirements, and if you look and see how they're written, you can tell that whoever wrote this did not know what they're talking about. Item number five on this unit right here. Thank you. In the event that you do bottoms, they say you must be commercially certified. Now, I personally am a commercial diver. I went to the College of Oceanery in Wilmington, California, dove professionally as a commercial diver for American Oilfield Divers in Bressard, Louisiana. Won't go back there. But that is just absolutely ridiculous. They are accepting actually paddy divers. So, that shows right there that whoever wrote this didn't know what they were talking about. The other items, like the longshoremen and dockworkers, we don't qualify for either of those. These are not navigable waters. This is where you park your boat. This is a marina. This is not a thruway. We are not a transient waterway. There's only one way in, one way out. You can't go through, you can't go passing by. It is not a working environment as stated or as defined in the longshoreman's statement there, item number three. Also, the city about the, what was it, number three? Anyhow, all that aside, I'm sorry, I left my notes, but what they are requiring is just like I said, can't do it. You would literally have to build this insurance. You would start with your one, two, you would buy an additional million at a cost of $1,000 to $1,500 per million to build it up to the $4 million, $2 million. You know, you're talking about anywhere from, you know, $4,000 to $5,000, $5,500 or more. Once again, I thank you for your time. Please reconsider this. We need your help.
Arlene Hammerschmidt. Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Hi, Arlene Hammerschmidt, Fire Mountain again. Actually, I hope that this problem has already been solved, and this is short and sweet. Figure out a way to keep Oceanside High School graduation at the Junior Sale Amphitheater during construction, rehabilitation, et cetera. This is something we do for the community. There's a big rumor going around town basically is, you know, did, does not anybody think about this stuff? This has been going on since forever. It's gotta keep happening, and it's, there's gotta be a way. You know, just 'cause construction is going on doesn't mean that the, this venue has to be shut down for this. There can be modifications, there can be fewer seats, there can be porta-potties, there can be a way to make this happen. But what I was gonna say about the rumor is, this is just another case of city ignoring the residents for the tourists, for the convenience of the tourists. So, I don't, like I said, I hope this problem has already been solved. I haven't talked to anyone in planning about it, but I know that there are a lot of smart people who can figure out modifications to make both things happen at the same time. So, please do make that happen. Thank you.
No further public... Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, thank you, Arlene. I just wanna make some comments. Of course, it's not a council item at this point, but I did look into this 'cause I happened to have been, not this Saturday, but the Saturday before, at an event where there was the two choirs of OHS, about 50 kids, and most of them were seniors, and that was the first time I'd heard about it, 'cause after they finished, they had found out that I was in the room, and most of them just came over to me saying, yes, it was like a stampede. My understanding, and I, I'm not sure, I think we need to, to figure out all the information because I believe we do have a new superintendent, and my concern is that, I know that the, that the Oceanside Unified has been trying to move to get, to change the graduations at the band shell. And it is, to me, it's a tradition that's been around for what, somebody told me, 100 years. I know at least 50.
I don't think the band shells been there 100 years.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think at least 50 years, and it is a tradition. This is a special events issue, but I believe it's also an Oceanside Unified issue. So, I think we need to come together somehow, and we need to do, we need to bring in also the students, the class representatives. So, if you have or anybody has some way of contacting everybody and getting everybody to the table, I think this is a very, very important issue. You know, I graduated, you know, at the band shell, and I know that everyone, I mean, that is very, very special. Nobody else does this. So, I would invite people to contact me, see how we can get everybody at the table, and see if we can, I understand from the city's perspective that, you know, I don't even have a timeline on construction of the, of the hotel, which is on two, on both blocks, right? So, I don't even know if it's physically possible, 'cause I know that they're going to be digging very, very deep. I don't know, maybe by June, maybe they won't be doing it at that point, but I don't know. We need to also contact others who would feel left out if, say, Oceanside Unified was granted the permission, and others who usually have events down there, you know, how would they feel? So, this is a bigger issue for, as I understand. So, we need to get everybody at the table, and I'm, you know, this is a message to me, from me to the community. Let's talk, and let's see if there's something that can be done.
Put our heads together and come up with some, something we can all trust in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, item number 16 is adoption of a resolution approving a tentative parcel map, development plan, and regular coastal permit to permit a two-lot residential subdivision for row home development at 522 North Tremont Street, which is not within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. 522 North Tremont Street, Row Homes, applicant Marion Kyle.
We'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I've visited the site and staff.
Staff and I went by the site.
Public.
Your disclosure. If you talk to anybody on the project about this.
All material's been provided to the council.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. I'm Scott Knightengale from the Planning Division, here to present Agenda Item 16 for the adoption of a resolution approving a tentative parcel map, development plan, and regular coastal permit. The staff and the Downtown Advisory Committee recommend that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving this tentative map, development plan, and regular coastal permit to permit a two-lot residential subdivision for row home development located at 522 North Tremont Street. A little background on this is that back in July 26, 2017, the Downtown Advisory Committee reviewed both this project and the District Nine text amendments and voted 4-3 for recommending approval. The District Nine text amendments were to remove the 30,000-square-foot minimum prohibition for row homes within District Nine. DAC did also recommend removal of existing prohibition of standalone residential along Coast Highway. DAC member Higgins Wright and Andreyov voted no based on this motion. The committee members' concerns did not actually apply to this project, because this project is not on Coast Highway. And back on October 4, 2017, City Council adopted the resolution to approve that 30,000-square-foot requirement to allow the removal and allow the smaller lot, 2,500-square-foot row home developments within District Nine. This resolution did not include the removal of the prohibition against a standalone residential on North Coast Highway. And lastly, on April 11, 2018, the California Coastal Commission approved the city's local coastal program amendment to allow this District Nine amendment. And that's the reason we're here today, so they can construct the row homes at this subject site, at 522 North Tremont. Site is located within the townsite neighborhood and also not, it's within the non-appellable district of the local coastal zone. The property has a D9 sub-district downtown zoning, which permits single-family, multifamily, and commercial on North Coast, fronting on North Coast Highway. The site is surrounded by multifamily condos and row homes to the north, commercial retail to the east, and single-family and multifamily developments to the south and west. Here's an image of the site as it exists today. It's a 5,000-square-foot lot. It's currently vacant with the exception of that small structure you could see on the right, which was formerly used as a storage shed for a past tire and type of industrial use back in 1960s. The site has a slight topography increase as you move to the east, from one foot to Like I said, in the proposal, it's for two row homes. They'll both have similar floor plans, which will consist of four bedrooms, five baths, and a four-car tandem garage configuration. Each home only requires two, so they are providing additional parking area. Each home will be developed with a rooftop terrace accessed from a 120-square-foot elevator penthouse shaft. The parapet walls of the structure will meet the maximum 35-foot height limit. The elevator height exception won't have any extra space for storage, strictly only for access. Each unit, like I said, would mirror one another, will be 3,630 square feet. And they'll have approximately 1,800 square feet of private balcony space. And the four-car tandem garage will be a larger garage, this will be 732 square feet. And the additional outdoor rooftop area will be about 900 square feet. Here's an image of the tended parcel map, which will allow the split of the 5,000-square-foot lot into two separate 2,500-square-foot lots. The proposed density is at a range of 17.4 dwelling units per acre, which is under the allowable of 29 to 43 per this District Nine zoning code. Here's an image of the floor plans. The bottom shows the first. Second is on the top there. First level will be, consists of a front entry, a great room, one full bath, an elevator, and attached four-car tandem garage. The second level will be, consists of two bedrooms, two baths, a laundry room, and media room, and as well as balcony space. And the third will consist of the dining area, kitchen, master suite, and some additional balcony space as well. Here's an image of the elevations. Each row home would consist of an identical floor plan, which has been designed in a mixture of contemporary and modern-type architectural designs. There's an image of the south elevation. The architect has worked with staff to provide articulations and some fenestrations on the front and the rear, so you have some breaking of the massing of the, from the street views, from the alley and from North Tremont. Let me go back to this real quick. On the total habitable building height, like I said in the data stats there, it does meet the 35-foot height limit up to the top of the railing. The maximum height, all the way up to the top of the access stairwell, will go up to about 38, 39 feet, so it's additional four feet of increase. We worked with the architect to ensure that the access, like I said, would only be the elevator and the stairwell, and also to not have the structure go across the entire building to look as another story. So, he has worked with staff on that. So, in reviewing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the following. General Plan Land Use Compliance, the two-lot subdivision development will continue to achieve the balance of residential land uses for the area. The row home development will provide a good transition between the existing high-density and single-family and row homes that are within this area. The proposed development will be compatible and appropriate for the area and the location. And also, as condition, the project would be consistent with the findings and development within the downtown sub-district nine, and complies with the recent direction to minimize the height, with the height exceptions. And also, it is consistent with the local coastal program. There's no public coastal beach access. This site is nowhere near a public access route for the beach. No public coastal view impacts, nor is there any public parking impacts. All the access will come off the existing alley. So, with that, staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt the resolution approving the development plan, tender map, and conditional use permit to permit the two-lot residential subdivision at 522 North Tremont Street. This concludes my presentation. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions.
At this time, if the applicant wishes, they can speak at this time? If not...
I'm Todd Brazen. I'm with B+D Architecture. We were the architects and designers for this project. I don't know why the audio wouldn't be coming up. We tested this before. Welcome to 522 and 524 North Tremont Street, a two-home project by longtime resident of Oceanside, Marion Kyle. I'm Todd Brazen with B+D Architecture. We assisted Marion in realizing her vision for this site. In Marion's dream home, she insisted on a clean, contemporary design that looked toward the future of development in the city of Oceanside. Yet, she also wanted a house with amenities that would allow her to gracefully age in place, including a guest suite for a caregiver. With escalating values near the beach, we strove to create a stylish facade that will be in vogue for generations to come. And we also paid close attention to the floor plan to create a dynamic yet comfortable arrangement that fits today's active lifestyles. And lastly, we've incorporated the latest building technologies that promise the utmost in energy efficiency. Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward at this time?
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes, thank you. I know that we've already accepted the notion or the idea of row homes. I have to say that when we talked about this a year ago, I think I was thinking about the Oceanside row homes that we have. This is, when I first saw this, I thought, whoa, this is very, very different. I do have a couple of questions with respect to the height. The staff report included some diagrams to the staff report and the side views of the prototype, and it looks like there's a wall that goes all the way up. Staff, how high is the wall, the wall that looks like there's some glass there as well? Does that exceed the 35 feet? Do you understand the diagram? Because it was also shown in the applicant's video. It showed it as a wall, not as glass, but as a wall.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes.
That's a, yeah, that's part of the access structure. We consider that an architectural projection, that's part of it. And it does kind of provide some articulation in the, in the structure itself.
My question is, how high is that wall?
That wall is approximately five feet, but it exceeds the height by basically 4.8 feet, same as the structure itself.
Are you saying that it's more than 10% of the top exceeds the height?
No, this portion is under the 10%.
Okay, my specific question, because usually, there's a height, and then height limitation, and then there might be some glass around. This looks like it's actually part of the wall that goes beyond 35 feet. So, my question is, does it go beyond 35 feet? Because it, it looks like it's most of the top.
Well, the glass portion is...
Big quarters.
Right. The glass portion is the parapet walls, which are under 35 feet. I think you're referring, what you're speaking to is the side walls. As I can put, if I'll put them up on the screen?
Yeah.
So, that portion, that wall is actual part of the structure? So, the angled portions of those walls, those, and that itself is under, that's per the section that exceeds the height limit, which is permitted. It's under the 10% square footage area as well.
No, I'm looking at a different picture, which was actually part of the presentation. Can you bring up the picture that is in the staff report?
You're speaking to this wall? The other, this is just basically the other side? These are the two elevations that were in the staff report.
Let me show you, and then you can find it.
Can we address it to the full council, please? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, he's bringing it up.
So, this portion here, which you were...
Can you speak in the mic, please?
So, this, this portion, as pointed to right here, is under the 35 feet. This is part of the parapet walls. All of that here, as well as this.
Wait.
As well as that portion here. So, that is, that's just the parapet walls, and that's under, that's at 35 feet.
So, that wall that goes all the way to the top is under 35 feet?
That's correct. The only portions of walls that exceed that are the, this portion here that are right through here. And that's part of the rooftop access structure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the triangular portion there, because that...
No, I was talking about that...
Yeah, this here, okay.
Yes, that looks like part of the wall. And that's under 35 feet.
That's correct.
Okay. In the applicant's presentation, there was some verbiage that said, some words that said "future site" on the very top. And I do apologize for my voice. I've had a flu for a few days. a flu for a few days, that talked about a hot tub, any barbecue, that they would be building on top at some future time. That is not being allowed, is that right? There's no permit for that?
That's correct. That's not part of the proposal. If someone does wish to put a hot tub or any type of structure, that does require a building permit. So at that time, we'll review it to make sure it's under the building height of 35 feet.
35 feet?
Yeah.
Which is at the top of the...
Which will be no taller than the parapet walls.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. This fits within many other projects that we've done in the downtown for at least 18 years, that we've been here. So this shouldn't be puzzling, and this is not, this way, it's obvious it's way under the 10%, just by the size of the elevator shaft and stairs, which is totally permissible. I think it's a great addition. I think it's interesting new architecture. I don't know if I'll ever live in a three-story building again, but it's, it's a lot for crawling upstairs, and even with an elevator. So, but I move approval.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Item 19 is my recommendations for council nominations to boards and commissions. I would like to make just a few changes. First off, on the Arts Commission, Historical Preservation, Library, and Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission, I would like to have those be shown as vacant for the time being, based on a conversation I've had with Councilmember Sanchez. And then I would also like to change Councilmember Sanchez as the primary on shoreline preservation. Other than that, I would move approval of the balance.
So, does that switch me with shoreline? That puts me in alternate?
Yes.
So, okay. I second it.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, and thank you for coming forward with the appointments. And obviously, this is, the mayor brings forward the appointments, recommendations, and they're voted on by the council. I want to say that I know we all have had a chance to, to put in our, you know, wish list. I was very cognizant that, you know, there are three, four of us here, and made sure that I didn't ask for a lot. But in looking at this and on its face, I was certainly wowed by the fact that one of our council, only one of our council members is getting back, basically, practically, all of the regional appointments, and that's Councilmember Feller. He, and that has never happened in the history that I, you know, and I've been around for a long time. So I think this is patently unfair. I think that, you know, we're transitioning into districts, and we need to be able to work in the areas of our districts. I did ask for harbor and beaches, because that is, that actually is in my district. I will still be attending. I don't have to be, you know, have a title or anything. But I really believe that it really is, the, the, the presentation here is very inequitable. It's really unfair to have one council member have all the regional. I mean, that's from League of California Cities, North County, NCTD, Sandag, you know, just everything here. And I just, I have to say that I'm going to go ahead and vote against this, because I do feel that we need to be more equitable. You know, that's, I guess that's my comments. Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-1. Sanchez, no.
Mr. Mullin?
Okay, I'll go ahead and title item 20. This is the adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending the Rancho Del Oro Plan Development PD-1 Plan underlying zoning from light industrial M1 to plan commercial PC for certain real property located on the northeast corner of Oceanside Boulevard and Rancho Del Oro Road, Arroyo Verde Commercial Center Zone Amendment.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
According to Section 2.1, 243 of the Oceanside City Code, I wasn't a participant in any of those meetings. I'd like to recuse myself.
Very good. Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
Please vote.
Need to leave when, yeah.
Motion approved, 3-0.
Now you can come back.
Let's go on 21, too.
Mr. Mullin, 22?
21.
21?
21 is the adoption, second reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article 30, Section 3006 of the 1992 and Downtown zoning ordinances to establish revised accessory dwelling unit regulations with modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission.
I take it the same. You're recusing yourself?
You're going to recuse yourself from this one as well.
I would like to recuse myself from this one as well.
Okay.
He doesn't have to leave.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-0.
Are there any other general council member comments?
I, I would just like to say that it's, it's hard to believe how fast the years are going, going by in, in, in my life. I don't know about the rest of you, but it's, it's really spinning by, and I'm so grateful for all that we have. I, I am going up to watch a grandson gets, graduate from the Police Academy, Sacramento Police Academy on tomorrow night, and so I'm going to be out of town for two days. But he's got himself a job at UC Davis. Go Aggies, yeah. And, and it's a very premium police job, so I, I'm just, just the things that make, make me glad. I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, my colleagues, and let's have a great New Year in Oceanside. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just wanted to, to say that I've enjoyed getting to know my colleagues little more. We had a third-floor little potluck, which was great. And the staff at Oceanside, I'm just so impressed with all of them, and I look forward to getting a lot done with my colleagues in this city moving into the new year. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, thank you. And I apologize again. I've actually had the flu since Saturday night, so I've been out of it. But before that, I was able to attend the lighting of the menorah in Vista-Oceanside. Part of the building is in Oceanside, part in Vista. I wasn't able to attend the one here in Oceanside because we had a council meeting at the same time. But I also attended the, you weren't there?
I was.
I also, we also attended, I think Councilmember Feller and Peter, we attended the lighting of the, of the tree here at Regal, and that was really wonderful and beautiful. Want to thank staff for making it so very special and nice for all the kids and all the families. This is a really, you know, this is a time when you get, you know, bundle up, please, because the, I'm telling you, this flu is wicked, very, very wicked. So, you know, get, get your flu shots, you know, and try to, try to keep well. This is a time when people are either really, really happy or really, really sad. So I just want to shout out to everybody that I'm just so grateful for this community. We have a wonderful, wonderful community here in Oceanside, our differing neighborhoods. We have a true sense of, you know, caring about each other. So if you, if you happen to see your neighbor looking a little blue, just, you know, talk to him. And I look forward to, to next year and working on some very, very critical projects. Happy New Year to everybody. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. I know there are other kinds of celebrations that people will be having. I hope, I wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
Festive is for the rest of us. With that, we will be adjourned.
Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing. Zach's last night here. Zach, thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service to Oceanside. I think you've done a fantastic job. It's going to be very difficult to fill your shoes. I know we've had some people talking about, you know, you know, what, what shall we do? Perhaps, you know, you can have, give us some advice before you leave. Certainly, we have, the people of Oceanside have that option. It would have to go on the ballot as to whether it should be appointed or elected, but it would have to be November 2020. So we have plenty of time to talk about it. But as to you, Zach, you've done, you've given so much to Oceanside. I personally want to thank you. On behalf of a lot of people that I know, by the way, thank you very much for your service. We wish you, you know, I mean, I want you to come back as soon as you can, even if you can't, you know, if things don't work out there in Escondido, but I'm sure they will. And, you know, I'm jealous. So wish you all the best, you and your family. Wish you all the best. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you so much.
I think we should all stand up for Zach.
And with that, we will adjourn until 3:30 Wednesday, January 9th, 2019.
Thank you so much.